Everybody be impatient. You know, one of the perils of driving across the Bayway to work.
It sure is.
All right, so we're gonna get started. I'm assuming, since I see Mike up here with the electric department.
Yes, sir.
All right. You wanna give us a number? Where's my list of numbers, Jill?
Um, it's on page 27. Or in Munis, you can type in 003 in the org.
003. Everybody home there in Munis and on their paper copy if they need to be. Hmm? I guess I'm looking at this to why this number doesn't equal this number. Jill, what I'm looking at on Munis, I see a council total of 26.185 million. And on the paper, I see 21.628.
I think that must be, um, I'm not real sure what it's pulling right there, but let's, we'll just go by the detailed numbers on every line. I'm not real sure what that 26 million is. I'd have to go back and check that. Um, I see what you're talking about, but I don't, I don't know if it's pulling the... Not sure.
Well, in the, I mean, I'm on the, on the, you just go to that very first line, sale of electric energy, that jives, the two are equal.
Right. All of them look like...
And then kinda going down that line...
Yeah, they all look like they equal the, what's on the paper. So I will have to dig in to see what that number is right there.
Okay. Everybody following along, seeing what that difference is? While I'm just bogging this down a little bit. All right, Mike, go ahead.
Um, so what I did on this is I tried to keep it looking at, um, going back through the history, that's what I had to go by. I did increase sale of electric energy and our cost by 3%. I got that number through looking backwards at the AMEA totals of what we've, what we've purchased from them each year, so I did calculate a 3% on those. Um, then some of the other line items, we went through and we sat back and looked at what we've been spending historically and tried to adjust it. It went down on a few, up on a few. Some of the, like, the plant maintenance I went up on because our cost of materials for transformers and things like that is getting pretty expensive. Um, and we're also running low on some of our inventory items. We've had a lot of calls for three-phase transformers this year, so our inventory's running pretty low. We need to restock up on some of those transformers to have for emergency stock or other new projects that come in. There's two projects alone that are taking five, no, six three-phase transformers, just for two projects. And so we're restocking on some of those. I did have two, well, one full-time position and then a summer help seasonal in here as well that we can talk about. And then the rest was, we can go through whatever you need to do. If you had any questions, I'm here to answer. Um, try to keep it as, as lean as I could, but still maintain the system. And then the, the big project obviously is our, the five-year capital improvement plan. We have four transformers coming next year. One of them's a rollover from this fiscal year.
Well, I wondered if that was why that number, that council total, was the 26 million. Did it include that?
Yeah, that 26 is all the expenses and it includes the capital improvements plus the SCADA improvements plus the purchases vehicles and equipment. So in Munis, it's listed as an expense just for budgeting purposes. On your sheet, it's excluded on page 27, but it's captured on the cash flow report, which is on page 24. Because the utilities work differently, um, if you'll see the, their vehicles and equipment, 628-140, the system upgrade, 6850, and the, um, yeah, those two added together plus the rest of the expenses should equal the 26, 185, 344.
Yeah, that 626 is that transformer. I think that's about what it was, just 1.2 for the two of them.
Okay, so vehicles, equipment, and then the system upgrades and capital projects. Where can we see those details?
If you go into Munis under 003, um, and scroll to 50470, it has the detail for the purchases vehicles and equipment.
But those aren't the capital projects.
The capital items are on page two of, in Munis. Jeff, will you show him page two? It's down there on the left-hand side.
Like, next to accounts?
Oh, you're talking about on this page?
Underneath accounts, there's one, there's two little blocks, one and two.
Okay, yeah.
You go to page two and down to the very last line item, capital system improvement budget, object 59-500.
Yeah.
And those are on the screen if anybody needs to see them.
One thing, and this is easier than, than this capital system improvements budget, on the vehicles and equipment, I don't see a way to compare it to a previous year. Is that?
If you go to... This is the first year we've budgeted like this for the utilities, so, um, there may not be a comparison this year. It's got zeros all the way across because those aren't captured when they're purchased as an expense, even though we're budgeting that way, they're captured as a balance sheet item. I can pull detail and get that to you. Those totals for the past years. They've all been in the 16030 accounts, which has never been presented this way. It's always been a part of the cash flow report. We just put it to an expense this year for budgeting purposes to help the utility superintendents keep up with it. When it's purchased, it will not be an expense, it will be a balance sheet item. And the way the budget's always been written, you've never seen a comparison.
Like, even for vehicles, we can't see year after, over year, what we're spending for vehicles?
I mean, I can get that to you, but it's never been, it's never been shown as part of the, the budget because of the way the utilities report.
And I guess the reason I ask that question is some years are high, some years are low, depending on the department. Sometimes one department gets a lion's share.
Right.
One year, another may get it. And I was just trying to track that a little bit, so...
Next year, I'm probably gonna ask for a line truck, which is fairly expensive, but in the 2021 budget.
What does the remaining cash flow requirement for the five-year plan entail? The $2.5 million in there? And the system upgrades and capital projects? Because the one, the big number in there is a substation upgrade project, but the remaining cash flow requirement?
This is just the cash flow requirement for 2020. I would have to go back to last year's budget and check to see what, um, the remainder is for the remaining years.
It was included in last year's budget presentation. If y'all pull out your budget books, the recommendation then about the fund balances and all the utilities because electric has always been paying a lot of the operating expense for the city. And, um, Kim, I don't know if you can explain kind of, if, if that's even possible, to show how you could do that, a transfer from gas and, um, was it water or sewer? It was water and gas. Anyway...
When we looked at this, Mayor, you had discussed about...
I have it written down.
...the sheet, page 24, that gas had more cash and to be able to transfer 3 million from gas over to electric.
It's basically a correction in the past. We're not gonna reconcile all of the due to, due from, but the reality was, is the electric fund was always paying for most of the city operating, so...
What, um, would, you know, if I go back to that page 27 or the, the 003, and I go back to that, that revenue of 21, 628 and that expense of 18, 707, and then I go back to page 24 where the cash flow requirements are shown for the utilities, I guess I'm confused as to where that 2.5 million remaining cash flow requirement is. What, what line that's going into? Is that a...
Well, that, that is the two point...
Is that an expense or is that a revenue? What is that?
That, that revenue of 21, 628 and the expenses of 18, 707 is the net earnings, starting the net earnings on page 24 of the 2.921738. That number matches with the bottom on page 27.
Okay.
And then you have to take out your debt service and all your capital.
I'm sorry, I'm just a little, I'm a little confused by that, by these numbers. Anybody else got that?
I'm trying to follow along. I mean, I'm, the transfer in and out of the fund balances coming from the gas fund.
Right, and it's noted down on the bottom of page 24.
I see it down there.
And then this, this bottom line is basically just to support the, you know, the system upgrades if, if that's what y'all elect to do.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm on that system upgrades, capital projects line. Again, that's 6.85 million. And then if I go into Munis and I look at the detail, there's just that, that remaining cash flow requirement of 2.5 million. I'm just not understanding where that...
Okay, the, the total of all those projects in 59-500 totals 6.85.
Yep.
Um, there, there are specific things in that 6.8 that were detailed out, such as the substation project, the North Greeno right road light replacement, the Magnolia Avenue conversion, and then this one is, um, anything that is not specific but was proposed in the five-year capital plan, if that makes sense.
So it's an expense?
Yes.
Okay, that's kinda what I was trying to get to. So if you go back to that page, now I'm going back to that page 27, um, and I look at the total expenses, I mean, are we not to include those? I, I'm trying to get a real good picture. I assume that the... I'm trying to find a bottom line between the earnings and the expenses there.
The 2.5 is, is just like, it is included in the 6.85.
Right.
And it is really a balance sheet item in the utilities. It's, it, I think, I think this is a little bit confusing that, and for budgeting purposes, we put them in as an expense. But as far as cash flow wise, they, when they're purchased, they don't hit the books as an expense. They hit the books as a balance sheet item. So you just have to take your, all your revenues and all your expenses that do hit the books and get your net earnings. From there, you subtract out any debt service, vehicles and equipment, and capital system improvements. This is, this is the way it's, I mean, other than...
This is normal accounting.
Yeah, well, this, this is the way, really, it's the cash flow statement. I, I think that, that it's confusing this year because you've got this in Munis and it's confusing.
Yeah, it, that is part of it, but the fact that it's not on the, on the sheet with the rest of the electric fund, revenues and expenses is confusing me. In other words, if I was trying to determine what we need to do to be able to pay for these projects, and we really are spending more money than we're taking in...
This, this year, yeah.
This year, exactly, which it looks like we are. I'm trying to figure out, where do we go to find the money to maybe pay for that?
Well, the 1.637 basically is, like Jay said, your, your shortfall. That's what's needed if, if, if...
Everything is approved.
Yes.
Right. And that's, and I had just mentioned that there was, um, the one time, and I think we can take your recommendation, the one time transfers from other fund balances because not each utility paid to the electric funds, you know, expense, uh, city expenses. So we're not gonna go backwards, but we can, we could just make a transfer because they have more in their fund balances than what they need for the five-year upgrade when you include profits.
Over the years, electric depleted theirs.
Exactly.
And now gas has worked, has gotten theirs up.
Starting fresh, so that, that would help.
Well, I have a sheet of paper of cash balances, August 23rd, and I'm looking at the electric fund. And I know that some of this is restricted. For instance, customer deposits are restricted. I don't know what else is restricted, but there's 5.8 million dollars in that. And some of that's restricted, and I'm gonna assume that some of that's not restricted, Kim.
Well...
And so as I'm, for budgeting purposes, if we had a shortfall with a pretty hefty budget for making improvements, I mean, that's a pretty hefty budget, which is good.
Yeah, and not all of it...
It's 11.9 million.
...might be spent in 2020.
Yeah, so if we're 1.637 shy, can we simply get it out of our electric fund?
Well, I think this is including.
Well, when you look at this cash balance, I just, it's a snapshot of a picture of time, you know, depending on what time it was that we received the bill from the electric supplier.
Right, AMEA.
I mean, because that bill is over a million dollars every month. Um, you know, my concern is with, with electric, if you take of what should be a normal reserve, unrestricted reserve for emergency, you know, if one hurricane comes, you're gonna need that, based on 20% of their revenues, you know, we should have in a reserve around $4 million set aside. That's, you know, that would be a standard, just 20%, 20% for two and a half months of reserves. Um, when I look at electric, you know, I have concerns there because if you try to look at what account that's called second utility reserve and then a special reserve super fund, what goes into the su, the super fund is in fuel adjustment, just, it's an entry that's been done every, every month and, um, but it's a fuel adjustment. That's moving money from operations to a reserve. So, so when you look at, what I look at is maybe it's unrestricted, it's gonna be that second utility reserve or that special utility reserve. That's, that's really the only reserves you're gonna have. The other amount of money that's there, you know, the equity and pool, that's where it goes into BBNT off the utility, um, lot box, and then I'm moving that money every week. So depending on when you see that, that's my concern. I don't, I don't feel like there's enough money set aside in utilities where, where gas has some that's, you know, has more cash flow.
And I think it was water.
And it's, and it's...
I know that the water and sewer are together, but I...
As a body, I know that was a question, like, on the general fund, how much reserves should be set aside? So I just went back and looked at 20% of, on each, and I do see that electric does need some reserves set aside for the case.
You do or do you not? That's a, that's a matter of philosophy, though. Well, I borrow money and pay interest on it when you could go out and get a line of credit if it's necessary, as opposed to having to guarantee of paying a premium on your money. Use what you have and, you know, we, we know we can, we have any amount of credit that we need. And because we're not gonna be in this mode of trying to upgrade the, all the substations for, you know, infinity, it's gonna be, what, three, four years hopefully at the most, and we'll be done.
Well, we have, like I said, I, I think that we need to look and see what could realistically be, be done out of gas, so its profits are still able to sustain all of its upgrades. Then we do have, what's approximate amount from AMEA for the levelization?
Yeah, yeah, we have about, we have...
1.1 million, 1.1 million.
Yeah, we're gonna have, I was gonna ask you, is that included in, in, uh, revenue here?
No, 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 no.
That's not shown anywhere.
Okay, good, because, because that's gonna be enough to wipe out a lot of that deficit in of itself.
Well, we're just saying for this year.
You just use that to offset that $4 million expense.
Right.
And use other revenues to offset.
And then you do have an amount that you can borrow from, I mean, it's not that much, but AMEA where you have no interest and it's for annual payments. Well, it's actually not any payments until one payment at the end of the fourth year. So I thought it was 400,000, but you, you, yeah, I just, we need to clarify that amount. Anyway, so just look at every single thing that we can do for electric and include, including the fund balances that we know we're not gonna need.
I think it's fair to put the revenue that we're gonna get from the levelization rider in our revenues.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what they're for.
We know we're gonna get that, I have that number.
And, Mr., and also it's...
Moves a little every month, I'm not sure.
I think it's gonna move up, given September.
Yeah, it'll probably move up and then, and I think that's based on calendar years, whereas a fiscal year, so we should have a refund coming after the end of the calendar year.
Yes.
And also at the end of the next calendar year, which kind of will offset a little bit more, so we could even pull it back at the 6th month period.
I never, I never liked a budget in the future for that levelization rider, but we certainly know where it is.
And we are getting it right now.
Yeah, we have, I think it's a little over a million.
Okay. I feel a little better. I'm just, I'm just versed to borrowing and just...
So is that just a mil, we just need to add a million in the revenue?
Um, I can get you that number.
Okay.
Because it's gonna, it fluctuates based on their fuel costs and things like that.
You could easily, I know right now, put 900,000 in there and be conservative, probably.
I think it's gonna be probably close to 1.1 by the end of the year.
Yep.
And it's just called the levelization rider.
Yep.
While we're talking about revenue, before we add too much, I do wanna look at the projection for, for 2020, for the revenues. 2018, 2019 actual is basically level as far as revenue goes. We were a little bit above what we budgeted last year, but leveled from 18 to 19, and now we're projecting a 600, close $670,000 increase. Just wondering how that comes about based on the last two years.
Um, just looking at the five-year history I had from AMEA, going back and then doing a, looking at the load that we've added to our system just in the year I've been here, came up with about a 3% load growth.
Okay. I was curious about that because a lot of people believe that because the city's growing so fast that our electric department is growing as fast, but it's not because a lot of the new lines that are added are, unfortunately, it's, they're like Riviera, so probably mostly Riviera.
And it is, and it's a combination of any electric system where you do have growth, but if, say, somebody tears down 100 amp service in the fruit and nut section...
Right.
...and puts two, two 200 amp services in, the appliances, the lighting, everything's getting so much more efficient.
Right.
By code, you have to have all this stuff and we have to be able to provide that, that level of power, but it is a little bit, it's growth, but it's not as much growth as it had been 20 years ago.
Yeah. If you compare apples to apples, if nobody ever built a house or changed a home...
Our load will be going down.
Load will be going down.
Because everything's more efficient.
Unfortunately, uh, unfortunately, depending on how you look at it. But because our growth has been so much that we are outpacing...
Correct. Yeah, we are, and we're seeing it, I mean, you drive through Fruit and Nut and you can see where they take one lot, subdivide it into two and put up these huge houses. Um, the Graceways Department's coming out on Bishop Road, the intermediate school is expanding, so we are seeing a lot of load growth that way in commercial as well.
I have been told in, in some AMEA meetings, though, that there's gonna be some HVAC technology that's coming out for heat pumps. It's about to make them a lot more efficient than they are now, and so I don't know...
Yeah, I've heard the same thing.
...what the percentage of heat pumps used are versus gas heat and all that, but anyway, it's something to...
I'd say heat pumps are pretty, pretty high here.
...to keep an eye on here, that it's gonna reduce our load.
So, but we are experiencing some load growth, um, even though our, even though our territory is confined, we are seeing the load grow up.
All right, well, getting back to, um, I was getting back to the page 27, this, I'm just looking for numbers that jump out at me and the maintenance at the plant. I see a, a plus $280,000.
Correct. That one is looking at the price, again, going back to the three-phase transformers. I put $165,000 in there for replacing a three-phase.
Oh, that's just more ordinary business in that line?
Correct.
Is that where that came from?
That's where that was.
I didn't know it was in that line.
That's where that is. And then tree trimming's in there, the vegetation sparing, spraying, things like that, but the biggest line item in there is the tree trimming and the three-phase transformer.
And that's just gonna be what it's gonna be?
Their, the prices are going up.
Right. And if it comes in less, it comes in less and...
So, yeah, that was one of the ones we had in place.
I look at that, and we could trim that number, you know, fictitiously, fictitiously to whatever we want, but it's gonna be...
And we have to provide service.
Yeah, I'd rather you be conservative, yeah. That was really the only thing on the page, um, that, that really jumped out at me. Everything else was, was fairly consistent, you know, a little plus and minuses here and there, but I, I think, Robert, you asked a good question about that, uh, for the revenues.
And I did revenue and expenses for the cost of energy and the, and I did the same 3% multiplier on those.
Right, 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 yeah. I, I had assumed that you did that, but it's, it's good to know you did that. Questions, Jay, Mayor? I know you don't have any, you looked at it, but, uh, Robert?
All right, well, I'm here if y'all have any, any questions that come up.
All right. I think, I think we're, we're done with you.
That was easy.
Thank y'all.
It's easy when you don't see a lot of plus and minuses, and we knew about all the improvements going on, so that's not a shock.
It's gonna be an expensive year for the capital.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the purchases for vehicles, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of...
We do, we have a few things in there, um...
Yeah, you're gonna get us that, right?
It's in the detail. You have it on paper, too.
Yeah, here.
Oh, and that one, okay, it's on that list.
And it's in account 50470 in Munis.
Sorry, you were almost out of the chair.
Almost, it's all good. I'm just happy I don't have a 45-minute drive home now.
I have a 10-minute drive.
That's awesome.
A lot of that stuff is, um, some of the computer needs that Jeff went over, they're just very large, um, so they are considered capital.
It's all under the 003-5047, right?
That's correct.
And the, the largest line item in there, the bucket... And the, the largest line item in there, the bucket truck from Altech, that one thirty-nine seven oh five, that's actually a carryover from this year. Altech is running so far behind on their vehicles, even though we ordered that in March, we're not getting it till November.
Three-quarter ton truck plus accessories for ninety-two fifty?
Hmm, I'm not sure whose that was.
Only ninety-two fifty?
No, that's our share of it. That's for the plumber, for, um, facilities maintenance.
Split between four utilities then?
Right.
Forty-five thousand, that's that, that Horizon Thin client, again, that Jeff talked about.
Mm-hmm.
What's a spray foam trailer?
That's facilities maintenance, probably insulation, spray foam insulation.
Spray foaming buildings, it would pay for itself after, at least, I think it's, it's first use, is what Lance said.
It's, um, there was a thirty, I knew there was a thirty-seven thousand dollar, um, requested project in fleet maintenance that we were able to zero out due to the spray foam trailer.
It was twelve thousand five hundred. Is that split multiple ways? So it's four times that. It's fifty thousand dollars for a spray foam trailer?
Yes.
Subcontract that out.
We have somebody that can do the spray foam, spray.
Right, but just saying, but, but the projects that we have in right now, it would pay for itself with the first purchase, and then we would have it for other, um, facility uses.
So we have a, a, a location where we were gonna spend.
It should be in the notes, though. I think it was defined in the details.
It says, reduce cost of any spray foam project citywide. Just reduce the thirty-seven thousand dollar requested project in fleet maintenance to zero.
Do we have the manpower to run it? Do we have to hire some money?
We have, we have the, I mean, the department now that could do these projects.
And I think when we get to Lance's portion, he probably could, um, explain that better than me. I, I don't even know what that is.
I know what it is. That's why I was wondering. It's something that usually you, you sub out, but if we have somebody that's not being used for something else and you're saving, you have a thirty-seven thousand requested project in the fleet maintenance to zero, uh, did the thirty-seven thousand dollar project include the cost of the materials? Because you still have the cost of material. I don't know what the material costs are.
And it was, um, so it is that, and he can say how many one job, two jobs, but the other, um, now that he has a, a good staff, he's doing, um, or that department's doing, um, the air conditioning jobs that are caught, saving us a ton of money right now that we had to contract out before.
A lot of train that has to go into the application of that spray foam. When somebody doesn't know what they're doing, you can get more issues than you got solutions.
Yeah. That's why I trust the experience, so.
I know, I know Lance and some of his staff did, um, some spray foam work at the mechanic shop not too long ago. Um, so he can go over that as far as how that project went, but I'm pretty sure they got it done.
So I see, uh, a new Tahoe for you, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Says it'll be used for your primary vehicle. Do you have one now?
Give it to the new meter reader. Or not meter reader, sorry, locator. Our line locator has my old truck. So, and then the additional on that one is, um, if we send guys up to Montgomery for training or anywhere for training, if we send more than a couple guys, that lets them have something that they can put their climbing gear in and keep it out of the weather while they're gone, and then I'll just take another vehicle during that period. Stand up again.
Promise I won't say anything else this time?
All right. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good.
Good.
Evening, Terry.
In Munis, the org is zero zero two for gas.
I'm gonna take one of these and pass them around. This is just the, some notable stuff. I just kinda made a note of why I needed it and, and what it, what it is. And the organizational chart on the back, we did it for, um, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
Is this just the statement plus this?
Yes.
Thank you. Oops. I picked that. Yours is nice and pretty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Terry.
You wanna start?
Go ahead, whatever. Y'all got any questions, I'll answer them.
You're not gonna go line by line for us?
No, I can. I'd be glad to.
Hmm.
Uh, there is a, the first one, I guess, is a, some salaries I do wanna add in people. I have the few promotions of guys that I've had around, you know, that's just service line tech trainees that have proved theirself. Um, but the three positions I'm asking for is just for the growth of starting a maintenance department and, um, covering some areas that's, that's never been covered with our compliances that we gotta meet in the area that we're growing. It's just, there's, we can't keep up. Uh, the equipment, I've really spent probably about the same as last year, maybe probably asking about eighty thousand dollars more, uh, for some tractors. One of them on there, one of the tractors on there is considerable bit larger than last year. Um, the tractors that they had discontinued, um, so I had to upgrade that to a bigger plow to run gas mains. They've been out there pulling gas mains and actually having to hook a backhoe to the tractor to get the strength, um, to be able to plow in more than five hundred foot of pipe at a time. So we needed a larger tractor by far. That's where that came from.
Your, uh, your org chart shows you adding three new positions, but your salaries are only going up by eighty-nine thousand.
Was one of them a promotion?
There's some promotions in there, too, but it looks like three new.
There's, there's three, um, new ones, and then a, a third of, uh, a meter, um, position.
Totally, yeah.
And then all the other ones are promotions.
Oh, you know what? And I see that some of those tech trainees, uh, for twenty twenty, I was looking at the twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, you see where, did the different.
Yeah, I saw the big, you know, supervisors and all that. Okay. I'm also looking at the administrative costs going up by ninety thousand, which is more than ten percent.
Those were all the, um, like we discussed, um, I can't remember which department we were on, but all the new, um, positions that have been requested, it all factors into that number, um, as well as the collection cost for the revenue department, which that one didn't increase that much.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The operating supplies, I know you'll notice on there that's.
I was just sorry, I was just writing it down.
On the operating supply.
I was circling it as you were saying.
Yes, sir. It's, um, there was a lot, and on the last year, there's a lot of that that comes out of the pick tickets out of the warehouse. Um, that's, it's probably a whole lot of that. But the maintenance, the, um, compliance that we have to reach, um, per the DOT and FEMSA is, uh, the work is, we're having to put out, we've already installed probably four hundred signs. I probably got another eight hundred to go. Um, all the new labels, all the new barricades, uh, just to meet all the compliance is gonna cost that much extra, is just to paint, just everything together, plus the pick tickets out of the warehouse, which is any work order that has maintenance is a pick ticket item out of the warehouse. So if I add my seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars that I need really on top of that, that's probably about the difference of the pick tickets that's coming out of there as far as last year. Um, building maintenance, probably close to the same thing, uh, in the maintenance of the plant, um, it went up. Uh, the, we gotta get somebody here to prove our rotary meters, um, that hadn't been done in, I know, ten years. That needs to be done every year.
That's under the maintenance of the plant?
Yes, sir. Um, that is, that's just a necessity to prove them. And, and the turbine meters, we can't test them ourselves or, or even send them off to a small person. He has to come do it in-house. So he does it on each job site. Um, and that's, like I said, that's the bigger meters. That's the users that are pulling over a million BTUs an hour.
Okay. And that's about a, that's a over thirty percent increase from twenty nineteen projections, but it's a more than three hundred percent increase from twenty seventeen actuals.
I, and I can probably vouch, just because of the maintenance and what we have to do compliance to meet that this year is gonna, is, is really gonna eat that up.
Operating supplies are up more than three hundred percent over twenty seventeen. And we got some, you know, just for going back to twenty seventeen in this department, there's two and three hundred percent increases just from two to three years ago.
So what's never been on the, um, operating supplies i- in two thousand seventeen before me was, like I said, none of the labels for the meters, the houses, the warning signs working out there. Um, the, um, truck supplies was never on there. Um, all the marking flags to paint was never on there. Um, all my new pipeline markers, my located markers, cathodic protection markers was not on there. Um, the cathodic protection never was done, um, to code. And being that we're pulling that up to code, it's just, it's, it's more and more expense to get that done.
There's a, uh, I guess I gotta go back to the start of the page. I'm looking at the, um, you know, the difference in the paper copy again. Seven point two nine in revenues and in council total expenses, seven, roughly seven point eight. Jill?
Uh, because you have to add, you have to take the six million, forty-nine thousand on the twenty twenty and add the fi- whatever's in the five oh four seven oh in Munis, which is five hundred ninety-five thousand.
Where's that at?
Plus the SCADA and then the capital system improvements of one point one four five. They're also on page twenty-four.
That's where I was.
So if you add the operating expenses of six million, forty-nine thousand, plus the one point one four five, plus the six hundred and two thousand on page twenty-four, it should give you, um, that seven point seven nine seven.
Three million of that was a transfer to the electric fund, right?
That three million is not included in that seven point seven nine seven. The three million is just listed as part of the, um, cash flow.
Okay.
Leaving from gas going into electric. So on that one, uh, we're short three point five million.
are only one point one million.
Well, you're depleting your cash by moving it out of gas into electric.
Well, that's what I was asking in that, in that bottom line of three point five.
Yeah, without that transfer, that department's only about five hundred thousand short of doing what they wanted to.
Right. But if you wanted to use your existing cash, looking at your cash statement, you know, where, where we're trying to look at this year's revenues coming in, this year's expenses, that's what you're gonna be short. But if you're wanting to use your existing reserves or cash for this, then you wouldn't necessarily need to borrow it. That's what you're, I mean, that's, that's what this decision would y'all, would need to make is how, how do you wanna do that?
I mean, that's a big, you have a big balance in the operating account there. Is there something like a big gas purchase that's pending? You know, some, you said you took a snapshot. So there wasn't like, two days later, we had to write a check for two million dollars to pay for gas, was it?
Gas stays pretty, pretty steady. Um, and that's where the mayor had said last year she had seen that gas, seen that cash flow.
You got three point two in the super fund and the reserve for the vision there and a, and a real hefty operating account balance.
That's right.
But let's say you, you do that this year and you take that money and you, you make up that shortfall. What do you do next year?
Next year for what's on that capital plan, next year you may have to borrow money or...
Well, the, the only one that we were gonna be a shortfall or that was really serious would have been electric this year. The rest of them, based on forecasted.
The rest of them based on forecasted conservative profits, we should be okay.
In the calendar year.
Yeah, if they, if they all gets done in calendar year, you know, and you write that. If you're, if you're wanting to be able to use your fund balances, cash balances, then you wouldn't necessarily need to borrow money, but for us to be able to show, you know, a balance, a balanced budget, your shortfall would be to either state here instead of short-term line of credit would be fund balance.
Council, you got questions for Terry?
Yeah, Terry, just looking at the salaries since 2017, you know, look, electric's been up about 12% over three years, which, you know, I think is fairly good. Gas has gone from 485, 583 to 923, 466, that's about a 90% increase in salaries in three years. I know there's a lot going on out there, how do we justify that? Are we about to plateau on work, or are we going to continue growing at that rate, and then we'll be, we'll be losing money?
It's, we, we're probably, we're so understaffed, I've hired five people since, in them three years. And we're still really understaffed, I'm still only running on two crews, one to do gas mains and one to do services. Since I've been here in 20 years, we've lost employees. So this is the first time we've gained employees to get back where we need to be. All reality, we need about 26 to keep it steady going. If, if they were to stop all the subdivisions today, we're, I can see in the future of 15 years of nonstop of doing tie-ins, main extensions just to catch up to what has not been done in the past 20 years. So.
What's in that salary number, it's not just gas department salaries?
It should be.
Is, is gas department, will we back out the capitalized labor, any capitalized labor? And then it's, it's got a third of you, and then the meter department's a third, and then the engineering department, I believe, there's, there's a little portion of that in there.
Yes, I know the meter department's added some, quite a few also on that.
Yeah, the meter department has added to that number.
Do we know, are there funded positions in the budget last year that are not filled?
The gas.
Not in the gas, no. Unless there's.
I can't think of any in the meter department.
Actually, our projected actuals are greater than the budget last year, Robert, for salaries. 66 by $86,000. What concerns me is the trend, and I understand you're trying to catch up. Revenues have increased from 2017 to 2020 13.3%, and salaries have increased 90%. And I see, you know, I can believe if you say you were behind, but if something doesn't level off soon, it's not sustainable. I mean, a 90% increase. I don't know, just, that's the way I see the numbers. And then not to mention the other numbers that are up 2 and 300%. Some of that, you know, maybe like operating supplies, you mentioned a lot of examples, the maintenance things that needed to be done, maybe they were just fictitiously low. But that's, when you have a 13% increase in revenue over three years, and 90, 200, 300, 400%, that's tough.
A lot of that, a lot of that maintenance is just stuff that wasn't being done. I mean, it's.
Yes, those numbers should have been in those other budgets you're talking about to start with. But, yeah, I mean, I don't know that we've increased hard salary cost in the department by 300%.
Yeah.
I just can't believe that. We've, hell, we lost the superintendent that was making a pretty good amount of money.
I'm just going by, all I'm doing is looking at numbers, they were, they were 485.
How many full-time employees are in the gas department right now?
19.
I mean, how many were there three years ago?
16.
Yeah.
Well, actually 14.
The department itself is responsible for all that.
We had 16, and we've gained three.
In the last three years?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know how that, how that fits into this math.
Yeah, it goes 485, 627, 835, and 924.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, I just don't know how that equates to what, unless all three of those employees are, you know, $150,000 employees.
About far.
437,000 increase. Yeah.
Here's full time and utilities.
Maybe we didn't get our share of the former, you know, we had a general superintendent and.
Yeah, maybe something was allocated right.
Maybe they weren't being charged to the guy, I don't know.
I don't, I would have to see that.
We had 18 employees in 2012, then went it down, down to 17, then 15, 15, 15.
Yep, it dropped.
16 in 2017, 16 in 2018, and then 19 in 2019.
Yes.
So, and so you, so what was that, Mayor, when did, when did we hire the three?
This is.
It would be.
Seven.
It would, it would have been in 2019. Well, it would have been 18 too, but I mean, the fiscal year starts October 2018.
Yeah, that's hard to see me believe too with the ones that we lost.
It's kind of something Jack was talking about earlier, just looking at, and again, just looking at the sheets, you've got a request in here for 138,000, and that's three new employees plus the promotions inside the department. So a fund increase of 138, but looking at the 2019 budget to the 2020 budget, it only goes up, you know, 89,000.
What are you talking about fund balance though?
I'm talking about the revised budget versus, I'm saying, I'm saying the front, meaning how much, that's what they're proposing in increases for that department.
Oh, okay.
And so, I mean, I just, something's funny with our numbers, I just, I can't quite reconcile it.
Everything.
Yeah, it includes a 3% as well.
Well, if these are new, they wouldn't include 3%.
Well, the, the new ones don't.
Right, right, but includes benefits and insurance and everything.
And I don't know how many, this is the meter department, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's, and that's one, you know, maybe, maybe it, maybe it's because there's some call sharing.
2019, I think that 2019 number is wrong, because it, 2018 actual was 626, 922, and then in 2019 it increased over 200,000.
And we added 3.
Almost 300,000 to the projected 2019.
Well, if you, if you look on the screen behind you, gas's salaries are already 884002, if you add another 37,000, that's 920-something thousand. 921,000. So it's, it's not off. 921,250. We've got one more payroll, so.
Got 96,720 in line 70, Robert, three new positions there. I'm thinking that line 80 is that existing, 785, 146?
That is all through the remaining, just the remaining that aren't detailed out, all other salaries.
And then the ones that are above that, 10 through 60 are promotions?
Right, exactly.
23, 26, 28. That's 96. Shows us a little bit more than, a little bit more than the 90, but still not, not significantly more.
Yeah, I just don't see them numbers either.
As you said, and looking at your sheet, that in 2017 we had 15 or 16.
Uh, 16, I think.
16.
And then we have, I mean, there's just no way.
That would have been as the end of, would be like September.
I think that must have been like 3%.
16, so I mean, there's just, yeah.
We've added three employees for 437,000.
They missed me.
That is just gas's share of a meter assistant. That, that unit cost is a third.
Yeah, right, y'all see that, and three times that, give the total.
From there.
Yeah, I got that. Not so much this number, this number's not what's being asked about, it's the total increase, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at it, just kind of in this.
Is it being paid for out of somewhere else?
Because if you look at.
One thing I would like to start doing though is benchmarking, you know, salaries to gross revenue from other gas systems.
I agree.
And just compare ourselves with different benchmark levels that we can come up with, and just see where we stand in the industry, you know? I mean, I, I don't want to look at what one number looks at today and think that all of a sudden we're way out of whack, because I don't know that we are.
I'm not, and you may be totally right, I can't, I don't have any numbers to argue that one way or the other, but I'm just, but, but going on by these numbers, seeing a 90% increase in three years.
It looks like it's significant, I understand that.
That's, but we've added four people.
Three, yeah.
Yeah, three people.
Three people.
Yeah, I mean, so if you look at, if you consider that this year, your actuals are going to be about 919,000, 130,000 dollar increase is only about 14% over this year, and you know, that would put it, you know, closer to 25 or 30 over actuals from two or three years ago, not 90% because that, there's just no way that number could.
Well, last year's actuals were 919.
That's all, that's what I'm saying about the 14%, that would be over this, this, I'm saying this year to next year, that increase. And if you take that.
Well, over actuals, budget over actuals is only what, 4, 4,000 over 919,000.
Just from 17 to 18.
That's only a point, a 0.4% increase over last year's actuals.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know, I'm saying I don't know how, I can't reconcile this number because if it's 919 right now, and we're proposing 132,000 in raise, in money, there's no way it can be 923.
Unless there was overtime last year. And you're taking it out this year.
It's on there in a separate item still.
But it doesn't, that overtime is that for, because there's two different types of overtime in utilities. Standby.
And you got the on-call and.
Right, on-call and.
During the year where your guys hired, because it may be a situation where, you know, there weren't.
Just as soon as that other budget passed, I hired one the first year, and then two, I think, last year, just right after the budget got passed.
Is there some kind of way, Jill, if we looked at, like those collection costs, revenue department, and added it to salaries somehow, maybe those numbers start getting closer, and then you add them for 2020 to salaries, the numbers start getting closer together?
Are you talking about the 59,000 plus 852?
Right, compared to 242 and 4, well, I'm talking 59 plus 923 this year versus 2017, 242 plus 485.
Yeah, you know, before, I think the meter department was paid out of the revenue.
So that was all revenue department.
Right, and now they're, they're all split, those salaries are split among the utilities, and then we have three or four employees that do SCADA mapping type stuff that utilities take a share of that too, which years ago, it wasn't that way.
I think that's where it's got to be coming from.
I think it may be deriving from just the way it's divided up among the departments, that that salaries are lower back in 2017 and much higher now, maybe because the collection costs are a lot lower.
Right.
Close to 200,000 lower, admin costs are 100,000 lower than they were then.
Well, and the 242 meter department would have been in that number, whereas now, now, it's now in the salary figure.
That's probably where it's coming from.
If you add those collections, administration, salaries, those three numbers together for 2017 and add them together for 2020, there's very little difference.
See that, if you want to know.
Yeah, it's.
I'm trying to give you an out, I'm not sure I can believe that, but I'm trying to find an explanation.
Well, I do know in, in 17, that was, I don't think we were quite there as far as getting everything moved around yet.
Yeah.
So the 242 would have been meter, still in revenue.
So you're really only adding three service line tech trainees?
Trainees, yes.
And then you had some promotions and whatnot, and we don't, we don't talk about that in these, in these meetings because we're talking about what people, you know, we're talking individuals, and, I mean, we could, but we don't like to talk about, you know, what Jay's making in a meeting, and what kind of raise he's going to give.
I agree.
I might want to ask you questions later about some of those raises that I see in here in the, you know, in Munis. There's one person that's, you know, that's line 40. I don't know what they're making, but I see a significant, I'm sure that's a promotion, but I see a significant, you know, increase. It's something that I've, you know, seen for, for many years in the city is, in, in the real world, people don't get 30% raises. They don't get 40% raises, they don't get 25% raises, and I, I don't know, this might be a 2% raise, I don't think it is, but I mean, my guess is, is that's a, easily a double-digit, a double-digit raise. So, I may ask you about that.
Okay.
Reserve the right to ask that, in fact, it may be in the details.
There's a lot of detail on those promotions.
Yeah.
See that there? I'm not picking on that person, I'm just, we've always looked at.
And you may want to read that detail just while we're sitting here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, what he's coming from and going to.
That's a pretty substantial promotion.
Yes, and what he's coming from and going to, and what he brings to the department's extremely credible.
I'm not picking on that person at all, just saying it. Look at that too. All right, council, any other questions? Terry?
You got some pretty hefty vehicle purchases?
Yeah, and like I said, the one that, the dump truck is probably the biggest one, and I doubt, we're going to try to look on the state bid for that, but I had to put that in there because that's the same exact truck that Public Works just got, as far as the flatbed dump. My flatbed dump that I had got put on GovDeals somehow, like when I took over, and it disappeared, so I got to replace that. So we're going to try to go on state bid.
We sold your flatbed?
Yes. And that being said, I asked Tim Bong about that, and when you try to get a flatbed or dump off a state bid, it's almost non-existent because they'll order them if they carry signs and barricades and they don't dump. So by the time you get, get one and convert it to dump, you're about back to 100,000 dollars. And this truck is probably a 20, 30-year city truck, that you, once you bought this truck, it's, it's going to be there from now on.
Can we get that, Jill, can we get that number last year for the gas department, once again, like we asked for for the electric department?
The capital purchases.
Yeah, well, vehicles and equipment.
Is there anything that was approved last year that you asked for that's in here again, that we approved and didn't get purchased?
Yeah, I can get that.
And I believe last year, like I said, was about 220, 220-something, this year's about 330. And I think the difference is, is the, the plow begins, like I said, ditch which discontinued the mid-grade that we use, and they got a twice as big one as what this is. So this is the next line tractor that I can get as far as money, and this tractor will have tracks. And granted, that is probably a $15,000 upgrade on a piece of equipment, but there again, it will pull three times what the other tractor will pull in these new subdivisions. three times what the other tractor will pull in these new subdivisions, and on the right-aways. Well, that's probably, the two biggest things is most definitely the, the dump truck, um, and the plow. I'm only going to get one pickup truck.
When you submitted your, um, vehicles and equipment purchases, how many items were cut out of your budget that you submitted?
Last year?
This year.
Vehicles, uh, none.
Is it, is it fair to say that in years past, that department heads were used to submitting lots of items because they thought things would be cut?
Honestly, I don't know, I, I've tried to be honest and cut what, everything I could cut off of this.
You can almost always expect something to be cut, right?
Yes.
I think that's pretty fair to say, I've been involved with seven budget cycles, and, um, I guess, I'm not saying it so nicely, but, but I said it in the last meeting, there's, there's a lot of wishes, and I, I've, we don't, and I appreciate you trying to be lean, we don't, we don't really know exactly what's a luxury and what's not a luxury.
Well, and I agree, and, and as far as the tractors are concerned, um, and you can talk to Tim Bong, the ones we're doing now are six and nine years old, and they're constantly in the shop more than they are in my field, and like I said, they've been having to use the backhoe to pull them because of the power loss, they're just.
We've been trying to catch, you know, these departments up with these, with these purchases for several years now, and like I said, some, sometimes some departments get more than others, and it almost seems like everybody's getting everything that they want, and, and, you know, and, and I, I don't want to say need, because I think you have a need, but in government, you know, there's a limit as well. I kind of say that as a general, general comment, not, not towards you, but.
I understand, I totally understand that.
Yeah.
Um, but there again, the work we're doing is, is phenomenal, you know, we're, we're better than five hundred plus services a year with just what crews I got. We're sitting five hundred meters a year.
Yeah, how many miles a man we put in this past year or two?
About thirty thousand. I mean, thirty thousand feet.
I was about to say thirty thousand.
No, thirty thousand feet, about thirty thousand feet. We've already, this year so far, we've got over twenty-eight thousand feet in the ground.
I put together an Excel spreadsheet of vehicles per department this term.
Right now, we're well over four hundred as of right now.
I think it includes, yeah, includes 2020 proposed.
We, and as of right now, this year, we still got four more subdivisions on the books, um, there's probably thirty services on the board right now, and then we try to knock them off almost on a weekly basis, but.
I guess, I, every, every year, I keep waiting for somebody to say, yeah, we got a lot last year, we got a lot of new equipment, so we can cut back this year, but the equipment budgets continue to increase in every single department, I, I don't understand.
Well, what I did last year is I did get the new pickup trucks, because other trucks were out, and so this year, that's why I was hoping to get the new tractor, and I did leave the trucks off, the, the only truck I asked for is, is we're going to get off the state bid, um, for four-wheel drive, so we can get on a rightaway a little bit more.
And I say this every year, because I don't have last year's comparisons to know where we were, but, you know, last year, we were asking these same exact questions, and, well, I need all this this year, so I may not need it next year.
Last year, last year gas capital purchase was eight sixty, we're on eight forty-four, and it was actually, uh, six by ten dump trailer on that.
Yeah, yeah, that was a dump trailer.
The note says it was sent to Gov Deals.
That was my, the dump flatbed was sent to Gov Deals, the trailer, um, we borrowed one of the ones that the city has, and it, we just cannot pull it around town and back in, so that's when I took that out of the budget, did not purchase, um, in hopes of getting a flatbed dump truck that we could singly drive, and it would also be able to pull the, uh, the backhoe if it went to a job by itself. We're very limited on what can pull our backhoe, we have two vehicles, and I did buy two vehicles that's going to pull the mini-Xs, and that's going to give an extra service crew from last year. We got one forty-three hundred that's this year's, needs to be retired, it's, it stays in Tim's, uh, bunker over there way too much.
Walker. Trying to find that.
Okay. Any more questions for gas, counsel?
Yeah, I don't know if you can answer this, Terry, but the, under the expense of twenty nineteen projected actual, about four hundred and fifty thousand more than what we budgeted last year, what, what did we do through the year, would we approve that wouldn't?
What line am I on?
I don't know why.
Total expenses under gas fund?
I'd go through the details.
That has to be their DOT component to work.
It had to be. That's when we had to, you know, that, of course, the leak survey we had to do, that was over a hundred thousand dollars in equipment to do that. We have since purchased our equipment ourselves to do it in-house.
Jay, any more questions?
No.
The purchase power too, it looks like.
That's a hundred and fifty.
Uh-huh.
Is that purchase power the same percentage decrease as you has, have on the sale of natural gas? I'll calculate real quick.
I can't have them numbers in my brain.
We got a roughly, um, a five point one, five point one-five percent reduction in sales and a two point seven percent reduction in cost, I'm, I'm assuming that may be because you got a profit margin in there, or a couple of percent. Makes sense. Not too bad. I don't have any more questions right now. Okay, all right, Terry.
Thank you all.
It's five thirty right now, what else do we have planned for today?
This is all we had on the list.
Anything else on that?
Uh, Robert, you had mentioned to me,
Yeah.
before the meeting, you want to talk about something?
Looking at the, kind of the projected revenues, and we talked about it, when we talked about the revenues and expenses, I guess, when Kim presented, working on a few spreadsheets, Jay just lets you know, and I'll put, when I get it finished, I'll put it in your box and give everybody a copy, just the trends of expenses versus revenue, to me, are a little concerning, so I'm just, again, putting out there, I don't know where we're going to end up at the end of this budget cycle, but just, I'm cautiously.
You want to send the spreadsheet of the trend that you, that y'all put together, that had the.
On the revenues?
I'm, I'm assuming the revenue. Yeah, it's already in their thing.
It's, that was just a working document.
Okay. I mean, that can, yeah, I mean, if you want to send that, or I, I can share it with them, because I've got an email from this meeting already, ready to go, it'll just show the revenue projections.
So are you talking about basically what I was talking about, that, you know, and I don't know if that was a good example, in that last budget review, was that we may be, we may be breaking even, or we may be on the positive side on, on the budget, but the, the expenditure side of things is going up at a much, and I don't mean just a tiny bit higher, like you might expect when you're trying to catch up, but it's going up in a much more accelerated pace than revenues, is that what you mentioned?
Yeah, and I've taken out capital purchases and capital improvements, just to kind of get a apples-to-apples comparison for the three years, just to see where the different departments are.
Can you bring us something on that?
I will, maybe about next week, Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday? Do we meet Wednesday again?
It's Monday.
Got to kill him.
We get Wednesday off? Can we meet Wednesday?
Mayor, I think you take your part, your part-time council member comments back.
In the month of September.
You could just approve them car block, and don't worry about it.
We could.
Okay.
Or could we just say, we want to exit by this much and go fix it?
Duke it out amongst yourselves, you know, somebody's got to come up with some money.
Just, just one number, just take one number, is they make this number, this, or this, or break it down by department, I don't know. All right, um, we've been working hard at this, thank you all, hey, Mayor, and Jill, and Kim, everybody else who's been a department head, directors that have been working hard on this.
We're working hard to do the improvements we feel like are important to the customers, I mean, we're not doing this for ourselves, it must be all for our customers and for the city. Uh, I don't want, you know, I don't, don't want to be looked at as we're trying to, you know, take advantage of any.
I don't think anybody ever thinks that, I think that we always know that there's wants and desires, I mean, and, and, and you're trying to do the best job for everything, I don't think, I don't think anybody comes in and asks for something that they don't need, but, sometimes you just have to, you have to balance priorities, it really just, it's a matter of like priorities, like.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
You know, in my house, I got a lot of needs, but I, I can't go rip up all the floors and get new carpet and tile and hardwood, you know, any day that I want, I got to, you know, prioritize, because.
And I imagine that anything you guys ask for would make your job easier.
Do I have a lawnmower?
Where else you wouldn't be.
Does it look like I don't?
But, but there's a balance of.
I understand.
You know.
And we're trying, well, I think we're sensitive to that, too.
Sure, I, I don't, I don't disagree.
All right, well, we're adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you all.